Yes.
Did you really?
You didn't know that?
No.
Yeah, I was the crocodile hunter before there was a crocodile hunter. You didn't know that?
Joe?
Were you really?
Yeah. I, that wasn't my title, but I did swim with crocodiles and I swam with piranha sharks.
You, you said we're live now?
God attack.
Okay, great. Good evening. My name is Joe Stronowski, Chair of the Rockport Planning Board. And this evening, we have enough members here for a quorum, so I'm officially calling this meeting on August 25th at 5:32 PM to order. The planning board is comprised of volunteers appointed at the discretion of the select board. Our charge is to ensure the applications that come before us comply with the town's land use ordinance and comprehensive plan. The board must determine whether there is sufficient evidence in the record, which is the material supplied by the applicant, to support a decision to approve the application. This is accomplished by comparing the information in the record to the requirements of the ordinance and statute. And so, in this evening's meeting, we only have one significant item on the agenda, and that is consideration of some ordinance amendments to the land use ordinance, to the subdivision ordinance, and to the harbor ordinance that the board will be considering and discussing here. And so, before we get started, I would like to seat two alternates as full voting members of the board. John Veman and Victoria Condon are seated as full voting members. And let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, okay, so that's fine. David can still vote. You want to sit up here or squeeze in, or you want to be there?
Hang out here.
Okay. Okay. And so, David P.O. is also here as a full voting member, and he is seated on the, our right. Okay, so with that, is it okay to use that mic, Jeff?
You can use it.
Right there? Okay, great. Okay. So with that, I'd like to get started, and the first thing I'd like to do on the ordinance amendments that we are reviewing here is to open the public hearing at 5:37 PM and open it up for public comments within the room. I don't see anyone from the public in the room just yet. And also, open it to comments online. So we'll wait just a minute and see if there are any comments that come through online. And we'll take comments on any of the subdivision ordinances that were posted on the town planning board website. We'll take comments on any of those now. And then, after we close the public hearing section of the meeting, then the board will proceed to deliberate and discuss those modifications. So, let's see, Orion, are you monitoring, or is John? John, you monitoring Vimeo? Okay, and you're seeing anything yet?
Nope.
Not yet. Okay, so we'll give it just one more minute.
There's only one person on here, Joe.
And is that you?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay.
It's either me or Orion, one of the two.
All right. So, here we go, comments in the room, seeing that online. I will close the public hearing section of the meeting at 5:38, and the board will now enter into deliberation and review of the proposed ordinance changes. And so, what I'll do here, board members, is I'll call out the title of the document that we're going to review, and that way, everybody hopefully will be on the same one. And it appears that, let's see, several of these land use ordinance and subdivision ordinance changes are related in the review of the applications. Okay, but anyway, we're going to start with the harbor ordinance amendment is the name of the document. Harbor Ord amend. Okay, and so if you take a look at that, I guess I just do have one question, Orion, and that is, I'm surprised that the planning board is reviewing this. Is that?
It's an ordinance, so it just, it goes through this, this chain. The harbor committee made this proposal.
Has the harbor committee reviewed this?
They reviewed it initially. They proposed this language. The O R C agreed. Now it's to you, and then it goes to the select board and it makes it.
Okay, so just a reminder, board members, what we're doing here is this evening with these ordinance amendments, we are not approving these. What we're doing is we're going to vote to either recommend or not recommend or abstain from either of those. And then, that will be posted on the ballot, and this goes to voters in November. And the voters actually will vote on this and either approve or disapprove it.
And I, I have a question, Joe.
Yes, sir.
Is, is the wording here something that was come up with by the ordinance review committee?
The harbor ordinance.
No, I mean, but overall, all these different ordinance men, who came up with the wording?
For, for this, for the harbor ordinance, that was the committee itself, the harbor committee.
The harbor committee, okay.
They came up with this language.
Everything else is O R C, correct?
Yeah, yeah, all the other ordinances are, but this, this, this language here, this is just harbor ordinance.
Okay, so on the harbor ordinance that's being reviewed here, it's 502.3 of the harbor and coastal waters and harbor ordinance that is posted actually in the reference section on the planning board page. That document is in there. And what this is doing, I'll just read it, 502.3, large vessel location limitation. Vessels of, it used to be 40 feet LOA, and they're changing it to 50 feet LOA or greater. Will not be assigned a mooring location in the inner or, and they added or, middle harbor. So, that's the change. Is there any discussion or comments on that change?
Yeah, I mean, so before, it was thought that a 40-foot limit on the inner harbor was, was the max, and now they're increasing that. So they must know, right?
Mm-hmm.
But they're also saying, but they're extending it also to the middle harbor. So they're, they're giving an extra 10 feet, plus or minus, to the inner harbor, but they're...
No, they're, will not be assigned to the inner or middle.
Yeah, but they were 40, and now they're allowing 50, up to 50 in the inner harbor.
But I think it'll still be at the discretion of the harbor master, who will have to see it.
Boy, though, I don't think that's...
That's correct, but that's how it reads, Joe.
No, 50 will not be in the inner harbor.
Nor the middle harbor.
Yeah, that's, he's saying 50 will be in the inner harbor.
No, I said, if it's 49 feet and 11 inches, then it's eligible for a mooring in the inner harbor.
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. But before...
So it's increasing it by 10, increasing it by nine feet and 11 inches and a half.
Yes.
I would imagine that the harbor master would make sure it...
Since, this is what it says in...
I, I think the harbor committee are the experts on this one. If they have written it and approved it and proposed it, I rely on their expertise personally on this one. I don't know if anybody else has different opinions on that. No, and further discussion?
I guess not.
Yeah, I, would, would you like to?
There's no graft involved, right?
Would you like to send it back?
There's drafts, not graft.
Oh, right. I move that the planning board recommend this to the voters.
Okay, any further discussion on it? Okay, if not, all in favor of recommending it? Okay, we've got seven all in favor of not recommending it? And anyone abstaining, no abstentions. Okay, so it's 7-0-0 to recommend this. Okay. The next one, the title is L U O subdivision planning director. And I believe that this is similar... Well, similar to another one, but we'll get to that one. Okay. So, everyone's read this. This is changing the subdivision ordinance with respect to how applications are treated. Any discussion on this item?
I was just wondering, it says, "The planning and development director shall conduct a site visit of the proposed activity." Is that, is that always going to be necessary? I mean, might, mightn't there be, shouldn't that be at your discretion?
No, I don't want it to be at my discretion, because then, like, how do I balance who gets the site visit and who doesn't? I don't, I don't want that to come into play. Because everybody will get a consideration, or everyone will get a site visit.
Other comments?
Well, basically, we're just giving Orion the authority to determine if an application is complete.
So we don't waste our time?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The only other thing that I did have something on, Joe, was it says, "In no case shall a complete application take longer than 60 days." What, I presume that if we end up with a logjam, you know, and too many things to consider, that we could also, once it was placed, we could all, always defer action on it to a future meeting.
Yeah, yeah, this is just to get it on the agenda, so. How it currently is, an application comes up, I tell the chair and the vice chair, we've got applications, and then the structure of the agenda, that, that part won't change. Just the only thing that will change is, yes, it's complete, it's ready for review.
But it can be tabled.
It can be tabled, it can be put on the agenda, and then at the meeting, it can be tabled, so.
So, I just made a couple of minor wording changes.
That's fine.
Yeah. I think that it's important for the team, the planning director, CEO, and the planning board to work together here to make sure that applicants that come before us have as painless a time getting through this process as possible. And so, it's a good thing to have Orion take a look at those documents ahead of time. The thing that concerns me is the words that are here that says "shall determine" that the application is complete. When we have seven sets of eyes on some of these applications, there may be things in the review of it, going through the different sections, that we determine that there is not sufficient information. And so, I would like for Orion to review the applications that come in, but I would just remove the language "shall determine", because that's taking the ability of the board away to ask for additional information, if that happens.
That's fine.
Can I just ask a question around that? Because I think there is a little bit of a structural change in the town now in the sense that there is now a development director position on staff that didn't exist previously.
There have been previously, it's gone on and off.
Okay.
Yeah.
But in most cities I've worked in where there's staff, like, that is their job, and the planning board's job is then to, you know, not to do all of that work. I'd prefer not to go through all that work at a meeting.
I think we're agreeing.
Yeah.
The only concern I have is that we would have no recourse, I believe, and we'd get into a very difficult situation. If Orion said, "I've determined the application is complete, and we got it, and we found that there was material that was not in there that we needed to review it."
So, I think you two are on the same, same thing. But, but to add to it, so let's say, you know, we got our box structure, they, they checked their box, they got a landscape plan, but my professional opinion, it's not a landscape plan, however, it's a landscape plan. So it's going to be your determination to say, "This is not a sufficient landscape plan." So the quantity, qualitative. If I'm quantity, y'all are quality. The quality of it, that's going to be your determination.
Yeah, we're not agreeing about Ryan.
I agree, Orion, Orion should be reviewed, absolutely. I agree with that. It's, the "shall determine" is kind of absolute that...
If you remove Joe.
What if, what if, what if we had this "shall review the application for completeness"?
Yeah.
Do you like that?
Absolutely. Now, okay, so then I'll come to the question, do we need to put that in the ordinance? I mean, doesn't, don't we do that today? I, I agree with the concept. Do we have to put that and codify it in ordinance?
Yes.
We do.
Yeah.
Because you can't review it without us like...
I mean, I review it, and I talk to the applicants, but applicants say, "So what? I'll go, I'll go deal with y'all."
My point is, I don't think we're giving up the right. We can always say, "Look, we don't feel in our, in our interest that it's complete, so come back at the next meeting." Even though he determined that it was complete, we still reserve our right.
I'm just concerned we're going to get into a difficult situation if that should happen, that's all. So, Sheldon, just, I'm just suggesting Orion reviews it, because that does make our job easier. That's the way it should work. Just take out "shall determine." We'll review the, or, the application for completeness and notify the applicant if there are things that are not sufficient. That's all. That's all.
Changes that John just inserted, "shall review the application for completeness."
Yeah.
And then we have the...
Yes, that's all. Right. So I agree with the concept, it's just I'm concerned about the words. That we get trapped, we get trapped, yeah.
Hey, so Mark and John, y'all are in the subdivision ordinance portion of that. So scroll up to 1302.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I see.
So where would it go in this one? So within 14 days of receiving the application, planning development director, "shall..."
Well, I would take the word you have there, instead of "shall determine", "shall review the app, the application for completeness." If the applicant, application is not complete, planning board director, I would take out "shall" and say "may," just because the last comment, I don't know if you want to make it absolute, that you "shall," you have to. Whereas you may choose, if it's significantly delinquent, you may, "may" notify the applicant of the specific additional material needed to complete the application.
I would agree, otherwise, you're, you have to go to a site visit before deeming it complete. Do you visit every site regardless?
No, no.
So may would allow you to...
The only time I visited, because sometimes I'll get it, I'll get an application 14 days before this meeting. So I'm just struggling to get everything together, so the way it's structured a little bit, there's more of a cushion for me to get their applications in, for me to make that determination and get it before the board.
I think "may" would better than "shall," but...
It's fine with me.
Remove the obligation. I think ultimately, these are, these are for efficiencies, not just for us.
And I agree with that part, yep.
For the applicants, if the applicants have counsel, et cetera.
Absolutely, absolutely, yep. And I think, we'll talk about this later, but I think even beyond that, it would be great to have some more detail for those applicants that don't have professional organizations representing them to try to make it simpler for them, because there are some people that are struggling with it.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And have some kind of sample or something, more detailed sample. So, this is going to be, I think, in at least three places, so why don't we mark up this, the words on this one? And I think the template that we arrive at here will work in three places.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
This language is presented to us from the ordinance review committee, can we mark it up?
So, so this language, well, first, anything that's before you can mark it up.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, but, but this language is language. So I, I informed the O R C that we need to come up with something for the organization. A couple of them felt like they could come up with language, majority of them felt like that shouldn't be their place to do, so I drafted some language, we're working our way through it, and whatever we come up with is...
We'll just go back to the O R C.
No.
No, okay.
This goes to the select board now.
Thank you for the clarification.
So, in this case, you're saying O R C had nothing to do with this one, then?
O R C did not want anything to do with this.
If they did, I would feel obligated to at least have them review it.
Yes.
So I would propose that in these words here, and I think we get, again, replicate these like three or four times through the other suggested amendments, that we strike "shall determine" whether the, and replace it with "may review the application for completeness." If the application is not complete, the planning and development director may notify the applicant of specific additional material needed.
Does, is it ambiguous that "may review the application" and "may notify the application," applicant writing? The "may" is not after the second "and."
Right.
And "shall notify..."
If you say "may," then maybe you don't have to review it.
Probably "may" then "shall."
You want to say "shall review"?
No, 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 sorry. "Shall notify."
Oh, "shall notify," okay.
Just to remove any ambiguity there.
Okay, so that, okay, that's fine with me. I mean, that makes it absolute, that then he must notify. Which is fine.
In the prior sentence as well, John, if you're in there? First sentence.
You want "may"?
Yeah, I would say "shall notify."
It feels like there are two things that will be "shall's," which is the planning director "shall review it" and "shall notify the applicant," but "may review it for completeness." So, is there a way to break those three things apart, so that the "may" isn't modifying to and the "shall's" are not interspersed?
I think, I think it should be "shall notify," "shall review for completeness." That's the whole point of this.
"Shall review for completeness"?
Yeah, that's the whole point of this ordinance change.
That we started.
I thought that's where we started, and we didn't want to...
No, it's "shall review it," but Joe's objection, if I can represent that, is that he didn't want to say that the director's opinion was the final verdict on it. In other words, the planning board reserves the right to say, "Well, he reviewed it, he thought it was complete, we disagree, and we want more material."
So "shall review for completeness" is different than "shall determine if it's complete," right?
Correct, right.
Yep, that's the point, so, yeah.
So shouldn't that first "may" be a "shall"? Yeah.
Yeah, I think it should be a "shall."
Yeah.
"Shall review, may notify," so those are both "must," and then incomplete "shall," you must notify this particular material, and "may conduct a site visit," that's pretty much what we want, what we want to write.
"Shall review the application for completeness," is that okay?
And notify the applicant in writing of what, of its completeness or something?
Joe, are you on the website version?
No, I'm just walking through my own copy up.
If you go online, you can look at what we're working on.
Is that what's on the screen?
Yeah, okay. Oh, yeah, that, that's what real...
The ordinance is receiving an application, planning development director, "shall..." Well, okay, so notifying in writing. We lost something there. "Shall notify the applicant of specific additional material needed to complete the application."
That's the next sentence.
Yeah, next one.
What does the "notify the applicant" writing mean?
If it's complete. That's connected to...
I think it's, okay, I think it's redundant, but...
It is.
I think you probably take that out.
Yeah.
Just "review for completeness" period, and then the next one talks about notifying applicant, yeah. "If found incomplete, the applicant shall be notified of the specific material needed to make the application complete. Planning development director may conduct a site visit of a proposed activity before deeming the application as complete. shall be responsible for providing additional material, make it complete, and okay, shall a complete application take no longer than sixty..." Okay, so let me just ask a question here about what you think about that very last phrase. Complete application take no longer than 60 days to be placed on the board agenda from the time that the final updated document is submitted, not from the time that the first document was submitted that was incomplete.
So it's complete application, right?
In the, "okay, shall a complete," okay, so does "complete" mean final updated? Or does "complete" mean the one they thought was complete the first time? Is that clear?
It should mean...
It's Cleveland, he says it's complete.
Yeah. That's pretty clear to me, unless you...
Yeah.
Okay, so complete is the final updated document?
For, yeah, so once, once I make that determination that it's complete, then 60 days from that, they have to be placed on a planning board agenda.
Okay.
And you can request a site visit prior to the completeness?
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand that, but if that feel it's necessary, have at it. I'm, I'm not sure how that fits in. Okay, now, one other question about this, I think we're very close here on the words. We'll go back up to the very top of this paragraph, "within 14 days of receiving an application." Planning director shall review it. Okay, so let's play this through. So Orion gets an application in, he decides that there's a couple of things in there that do not make it complete, and he asks the applicant to update that document. So that would be now less than 14 days ahead of the meeting. When would we review the updated application?
Next month.
The next month?
Yep.
I agree. Okay, somehow, we've not been following that really closely. Like, this last, last one, we got it in the day before.
Yeah.
Okay. So, does, what Orion just said, that it would be diverted to the next month if he updates it after 14 days, is that clear to everyone from these words? If they provide an update, it will not be reviewed at the upcoming meeting. It will be delayed until the next meeting, if there was an update. Good? Okay. Okay, if, if everyone's good with those words, I think we copy this like three times, and I think this goes in three different places.
Yeah, I mean, roughly, yeah.
Roughly.
Same, same concept.
Yep, yep.
The subdivision, the subdivision one's worded a little differently, but...
Within 14 days of an application not complete. Okay, so would, wouldn't D be replaced with those words?
Yeah, I guess it could be.
I think it is.
Why is "board" in parentheses there?
Uh, so "board," so in parentheses being deleted, underline is being replaced or added.
Hang on. Final plan application, so within 14 days of receiving a complete application. So hang, what's the final plan application with the completeness, what's the...
So we're in subdivision now, and there's like a whole...
6.2?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry, D?
Yeah.
Within 14 days of receipt of the final plan application, planning director, director shall review the application for completeness. Is that a final plan?
So, so there's, there's a pre-application that I'm not touching, so if anybody wanted to come before you as a pre-application, have at it. That's no vote, nothing of that nature.
Right.
6.2, that's a preliminary, if memory serves correctly, preliminary of a minor subdivision. So they would have their final application to me. And then, within 14 days of receipt of that, I would make a determination of completion.
I understand, so that the final plan is not complete plan, they're different?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we can take final plan out, or final out.
Okay with that?
Yeah, 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 no, I just wasn't quite sure.
Okay, so I think that parallels what we just did in the other place above. E, what, could you just give us a little color behind this?
Yeah, sure.
What you're doing here?
Let me read it real quick. Okay, so this one had a determination of when a planning board, or a, a public hearing would be set. So currently, I already do the public hearing, so I'm just kind of keeping that out of, out of your way. If we wanted to talk into the structure of how those are set, you'd have to hold a meeting, collectively agree, and then I could set a public meeting, because a board has to make a determination on, as a group, so.
So today, the way it's written, the board needs to make a determination that the public hearing would be set?
For subdivisions.
For subdivision?
Yeah.
And is that done after we review an application, a pre-app, that we do a subdivision? Or a, I'm sorry, a public hearing? Why is it that way today?
So, why is it that way today? The subdivision ordinance in and of itself is a whole other beast and animal in how it's handled.
Right.
I don't necessarily agree with how it's completely written compared to the land use ordinance, because there's definitely not a whole lot of parallels, and they've definitely missed some ordinance amendments. The subdivision ordinance is 10, 12 years old, so there's a lot of, lot of items in it, so I was trying to keep as true to all, as much of it as I could before we really get into heavy amendments later. So why it is the way it is, I'm not completely sure.
Well, yeah, well, my question was, I thought the public hearing part of this worked okay the way it is today. We've done it a few times now this past year. What problem are we trying to fix here?
Just ensuring that it's cleaned up, that the planning director is setting the public meeting policy of it. So determining, so you would, you would have your agenda, you have your complete document, then we'd have to set a public meeting. So I would get the information sent out, type up all the information, send it to the reporters, to post all that. The way it's currently set up is, it's really supposed to be the board doing that.
Okay, so just the physical action of setting up the public hearing?
Right.
That's all that's changing, okay.
And this provides us with the ability to table it for further meetings if we are backed up?
Does, does this create any contradiction with the bylaws? Because one of the things it says is that the chair calls all meetings. And then, further down in the next couple of paragraphs, it says, "The planning director calls meetings in consultation with the chair."
So, in the bylaws, it says that?
In the bylaws, yeah. So is this, does this mean that the planning director calls the meetings? Or just schedules the thing, the reviews for me, for the meetings that have been called?
Yeah, so I, I put together a draft agenda, I send it to the chair and the co-chair to approve, and then, once that's approved, that's a set agenda.
Okay.
It says, in the bylaws I'm looking at, Tom, it says, "The chair shall call all meetings."
Go down a few paragraphs, and it changes. See on page... Uh, C on page, what page is that? Page three.
Oh.
C at the top. The date, time, place, and agenda for meetings shall be established by the planning and development director.
So calling, calling a meeting, that's, that's what happens at the beginning of this, and kinda setting the meeting up. So like the agenda, the date, the time, you know, Joe would agree that, yeah, that's the date, but it's already set for Thursday of the month. And then at the beginning of the meeting, Joe, the chair, calls the meeting to order.
Oh.
Is that not how y'all interpret that?
So that's basically giving you the authority to set the meeting.
Into bylaws, now we need it in the ordinance to, 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 to do what I'm suggesting in the amendments here. And we're, we're gonna get into the bylaws here in a minute too, so.
Yeah, but it says, it doesn't say call to order, it says shall call all meetings. That means schedule and say when the meeting will be held. Can we defer that? Sure. I, I understand your point, and we need to get to that. Let's focus on this, and then we'll come back to that.
Alrighty.
All right, after we get through these amendments. Okay, so, these words now. What, help me out, we, uh, what kicks off scheduling the public hearing?
So we would have, uh.
Pre-application?
Well, no, uh, pre-application wouldn't do a public hearing.
Okay, what does the final?
Yeah, so a preliminary plan, that would be a public hearing, a final definitely would be a public hearing.
I'm trying to remember the order, I thought it was preliminary, public hearing, and then final application. Is that the correct order in the subdivision ordinance? There, there was a, a process outline there.
There's a process, but the preliminary plan had a requirement for a public hearing.
Before or after, after I thought it was.
I mean, it is at that meeting.
At the meeting.
Get out of here. Alright, article six. So minor subdivision.
Yeah, just pick one, that's fine, what's the minor?
Um, ba-ba-bum. That's procedure. It's notifying butters. And then a public hearing shall be held within thirty days of the board's determination.
Okay, so go back up, please, that's E under what, the final submission, is that what that was?
This is minor subdivisions, um.
Okay, and E was under what title though, what paragraph title?
Hold on a second, five point, oh, five is pre-application, so yeah, it would be a final, a final minor.
Okay, so it's after the pre-application that the public hearing is held?
Yeah.
Okay. So we would get the pre-application, we would have the meeting review the pre-application, and then the board would agree that there would be a public hearing that needs to be held, and then you would go off and schedule that?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the way it should work. So is that what we've captured in words then? I think so. Yeah, so, like, thirty days planning determination has received a completed plan application. It's really the preliminary, um, I guess, application. So go ahead and do us a D. Okay, so the question is, do we need to have anything in there that the board has reviewed the preliminary application before we go off and do this? That's the order that's outlined today, I think, in the ordinance. Okay, this is E though, under the preliminary application section, so.
Right, this is, this is E under six.
Okay.
Those are just removing board, putting in planning director.
Right.
Removing board, putting in planning director.
Okay.
Couple, um, had to receive.
Okay. All right, any other, any concerns about that?
Consumers to the main water company. Uh, I mean, that, okay, go with that.
Is the main water company, that's interesting, is the main water company the only one then that's notified?
Yeah, they're the only water company.
Not sewage?
No, that's, that's later on.
Okay, okay. Okay, so that was just consumers reference there. Okay.
I move, or should we go to seven, to do them all?
Yeah, let's look at all this section. So seven, one, uh, seven is what?
So, just real quick on seven, one, C, the only thing that I propose to change was the, or add, to delete that, um, because that makes it seem that they can submit additional material at the meeting. Or take care of these three items at the meeting.
Or items going.
Yep, okay, just parts of the meeting.
Prior to the meeting, these three items have to be here too. And then, Tom, Tom needs to take care of some radical stuff.
Oh, is the red U Tom?
The line Tom.
And again, just switching thirty, thirty to fourteen, board to planning director, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Same thing with the main water, okay. As soon as everyone's had a chance to review.
Okay, so eight is, what's eight?
Um.
One must have been minor, one must have been major.
Yeah, give me, say, article eight, I think that's the final subdivision, or major subdivision. Yeah, article seven's preliminary plan, so, uh, eight is final.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, for a major, okay. Alright, so same changes. Yeah, is there more below that?
Yeah.
That's it.
That's, um, that's, that's it.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, I move that the planning board recommend, uh, the changes to the land use ordinance is thirteen oh two, subdivision ordinance proposed amendments, article six point two, seven point one, and article eight point one.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Okay.
The, the, the only one I had, uh, Joe, you brought it up, it was in article seven, no, it was six.
I think that's a different document, maybe?
No, article six point two, you had mentioned using the same language as what was up.
Oh.
Here, now, is what's, what's here, six point two, D, is that sufficient?
Uh, shall review for completeness of the applications, okay.
Yes. You updated that, John, right?
Um, yeah, just the first paragraph of that. Article six, uh. Thirteen oh two administration, I think that's the one. Yep.
Did that carry through to six two D?
No, because you guys were still talking, so I was gonna copy and paste, but I let it go. It should probably go to D.
It shall review for completeness, that's what we want.
Yeah, I think that's it.
Correct. So all that, right, so that should be in all of the sections, the same words. So if we go down to the seven, is that there, E?
It's under D.
Oh.
D, okay.
Yeah, D, D needs to be changed.
Yeah, that's a shall determine, so that needs to change.
And under eight point one, it's in paragraph E. It should read, shall review the application for completeness, Orion? Do you want me to change it?
Yeah.
For completeness.
D, D on seven one. You got it.
John's taking care of it.
I got it. It's killing me waiting.
Alright.
Okay, so we've got a motion to approve it with a second, any further discussion on that? Now that all three of those are, three or four of those are modified to be the same. Okay, all in favor of recommending it? Okay, so it's seven, four, anyone against recommending it? Okay, I guess.
No, could I, could I just ask a question, I should have jumped in on discussion. There was, there was a question about the site visits.
Mm-hmm.
And it says, it says at least in one place here, may conduct a site visit. You wanted it shall conduct, or will conduct, didn't you? No, may, may, no, it's right as may. That's what we. Says may.
Uh-huh.
I think that's what everybody agreed on. May conduct prior to deeming the application.
But I, I thought you said you didn't want it to be at your discretion, you wanted it to be, say that a site visit would be conducted.
Yeah, that is right. I'll, you know, let it ride with the planning board how they want it worded, um, but, yeah, I, I don't, I don't wanna weigh it. I will do a site visit at every single one, because I'm gonna treat them all the same.
Oh, okay.
So you're saying every application that comes in, you're gonna do a site visit?
I'm definitely going to.
Even if it's like adding a couple of parking spaces?
Majority. Yeah, so the, even if, so the majority of them, well, because what if, what if I have a better idea, um, to re, re, readjust it? But, uh, most, most of the time, if there's a new, new construction coming in, they're calling me and I'm already doing a site visit already. And I'm doing it before I get an application, so the site visit wouldn't be very difficult to go and just drive by, check it out, and come back.
Only thing I would say is based on my experience, you wanna make it may, so you don't have to go out there for some minor changes.
That's fine with me.
It just leaves you open. I don't wanna waste your time, is what I don't wanna do. If there's some minor thing where guys add in the parking space, you shouldn't have to go out there.
If he's gonna add one, I'm gonna say, why, why would you just add in one?
I'm just, just a dumb example, but.
I know.
It leaves you open, that way you, you can review every one, but you don't have to.
You bring up a good point. I'm fine, I'm fine with whatever the planning board is comfortable with.
I would say may. And, and there are some professional engineering services that come in with some rather complete packages and are pretty thorough, and I think you'd probably agree, you don't need to spend a lot of time reviewing some of those.
No, and most of the site visit there would just, to be made, to make sure that they're not doing any preliminary work on it.
I would propose we make it may, perform a site visit, just to leave it open.
Well, may is what we already voted on.
Okay.
There we go, so we're done.
So, is that in several places though also, the may do a site visit?
I only found it in that one spot.
Okay.
It's over here in front.
Okay. Is it, okay, so we voted on that already, does anybody have any second thoughts about that, we okay? All right, good. Okay, so the one on the table now is, um, voting on this, um, I, we had seven zero zero. You raised your hand at the end, are you satisfied?
I just wanted to go back to the discussion part, but I'm good with the vote.
Okay, you have no reason to change any.
No.
Okay, so it's seven, it was recorded as seven zero zero. That was passed. Okay. Um, next one. Um, you wanna go to parking there, you highlighted?
Can I make a motion to recommend this?
Um, can we just at least see if anybody wants, yes, see if anybody wants to talk about it first, or you wanna recommend it already?
Let's just recommend it, we can have discussion after a second.
Okay, okay.
Kind of move this forward.
Okay, um, seconded, uh, to recommend it, or is there any discussion on this?
Well, um, I, I guess I was a little confused, because I went back through a lot of this. There seems to be a lot of streets that were specifically called out here, Orion, and, um.
Are you in eight oh three point five?
It's something different.
Are you in the parking ordinance?
Yeah, eight oh three point one point five.
Okay, okay.
The document you gave us. And then you gave us, uh, apparently some other comments that you wanted to change on. I'm not sure where we are now, that's why I'm confused, so.
So what, what's up, so in eight oh three, that's the, um, uh, parking ordinance, uh, table, and then there's a bunch of notes underneath?
Right.
So there's a proposal to amend one of those notes, because it's redundant and more restrictive than what's already.
Yeah, just adding the underlying language and deleting the parentheses language.
One point five. Where is this going? Well, I got, I got that one. I'm just looking at the actual ordinance here, trying to figure out where this is plugging in. Where did you say it plugged in, David?
The first, uh, so what they wanna do is they wanna, it's the first paragraph of eight oh three point one point five is where they're doing this. What they wanna do is at the end of that section, add this underlying language that says, "To assist in considering these factors related to off-street parking, the CEO or planning board may order a study of such factors paid for by the applicant pursuant to section thirteen oh two."
Yeah, okay, got it.
And then they were gonna delete all this other language.
And what is all this, um, Orion, somehow I got this other document.
That the one with the bicycle stuff and that's enough? No.
Question.
Oh, this is, this is with the, um, parking ordinance.
So there's, there's a, there's a parking ordinance altogether.
CEOs to find in the front. Yes, to find in the front of the.
Alright, so this is some other thing we're gonna talk about. Okay, great.
Got it.
Pretty early on, that's different here.
Looking at that and could not figure it out. Okay, thank you.
Eight oh three point five, is that what you're talking about then?
Point one point five.
Okay, got it, yep. Alright. Well, where did that other thing come from? Okay.
I was right here. So, there is under, we're under ordinance amendments, and there's.
Any other comments, you okay, John?
Well, yeah, for this eight oh three one point five, yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
So the change, one of the changes from the removed paragraph to this new paragraph is that the, the planning board would have chosen the firm doing the study. And in this case, it doesn't specify.
No, no, um, no, the, the planning board would say, uh, we need additional material, so a study of some kind. And then that would be kicked to, um, the office to do, and the office has our purchasing requirements, uh, that we have to adhere to, so there's three bids. And then we go with the cheapest one, which is then paid for by the applicant, that can adhere to the requirements of our ordinance.
I, I think, was your question related to who selects the party?
Who selects, yeah. How does this refer to that process?
Well, uh, yeah, yeah, so, so you, if, if the planning board determines that an applicant needs an additional study, then you would just order that an additional study would need to be done by my, I guess, my office. I get your point here, but my office would make sure that gets taken care of before your next meeting, or at a time when, when, when it can be, um, achieved. So whenever that engineering firm can fit it into their schedule.
Missing are the words hired by the reviewing authority.
Right.
That was in there before, and I think Jeff's asking.
I see.
Does it have to be hired by the reviewing authority, or can the applicant do it?
Well, the applicant.
The words now don't say.
Yeah, I see. The applicant shouldn't do it.
It doesn't say that.
And yet, everything else the applicant presents to you and the board is in the applicant's.
Correct.
So what, what should be added, the, the reviewing authority?
So you might wanna just add those words, hired by the reviewing authority.
Okay.
Paid for by applicant, hired by.
Yeah. Somebody marking up those words there?
So after paid for by the applicant?
Or in the other order?
I'm gonna let Tom do it.
I do comma maybe, and then, and hired by the reviewing authority? Hired.
Hired first, paid second.
Yeah.
Chronological.
Sure.
It doesn't matter.
Yep. Alright. Okay, Jeff? Alright, okay, so we have, um, a recommendation on the table. Okay, so we have a recommendation on the table. Any other discussion on this? Ready to go to vote? Okay, seeing no other discussion, all in favor of recommending this. All right, seven, zero, anyone against? And no abstentions. Okay, so it's seven, zero, zero. Seven votes for. Okay, next one. Rooms. Okay, so on this one, I'll start. I think originally in number nine, it had just the first sentence. And so now we're suggesting modifying this and putting those two or three sentences after that. Typically, in general, the planning board does not concern itself with the interior design of buildings. We determine land use, and we determine that the outside dimensions of the building comply with the land use requirements. So I don't know why, in this case, this would be different, that the planning board would get into looking at interior design of any kind of building.
Well, I don't think it's, it's a density question, not a design question, and it's gonna relate to occupancy and parking.
Well, the density in the village is defined in sentence one. And I think that density would probably determine the parking question. Does that seem reasonable? There's forty rooms in the village, the village is not that big.
You know, I, I kinda see where you're going from. So note number nine, the first, the first sentence, that only addresses nine thirteen zoning district. And the rest of it addresses everywhere else. So if anybody wanted to put an inn or hotel, they're limited to twenty rooms without planning board approval.
Uh, wait, 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 I, I didn't, I thought, where's number nine under? I thought number nine was just in the village. I think this is just in the village.
Nope, nine seventeen table.
Says nine thirteen.
Nine thirteen, no, nine seventeen.
Uh, it was note nine, yeah.
And then it's note number nine. It's all the way down there. I'm running.
In nine thirteen zoning district only. Are you suggesting the second part of that refers to the entire community?
Let's find note nine real quick. Note seven. Six. So note nine is just here, it's in nine thirteen zone district.
Right.
Now I see your point.
It's basically saying, in nine thirteen, no more than forty rooms are allowed. But if a proposal were to come forward for.
If a proposal were to come forward for more than twenty rooms on a parcel, it would require planning board approval. Is what this is saying.
Yeah, and I'm asking, why does the planning board concern itself with the interior design of buildings or land use committee?
Well, because it has to do with use.
Yeah.
And volume.
Correct. This is the, this is the issue with the hotel here. It was twenty versus twenty-six rooms, and it was, somebody said twenty-six rooms was too big, but twenty rooms was not. And what this is saying, if you want, if somebody came forward and they wanted to build a hotel more. The, the reality is, once that hotel's built the way this is written, you could only build another fourteen rooms in the village anyways. So this doesn't make sense anyways.
Well, I don't know, but we don't say that restaurants in the village can only have twenty-three tables or sixteen chairs. I mean, why do we get into the interior design?
Because it's not interior design, it's density. It's like if it was a multifamily building, you could sit there and say, you could have a forty thousand square foot multifamily building, but you wouldn't say how many units were allowed in it. But the number of units would dictate how many parking.
Yeah, but I think there's density issues in a lot of buildings, retail buildings, retail spaces.
A little bit, but you know, in order to calculate, I think, the parking requirement, you would need to know the number of rooms.
Just as you do with restaurants.
So you would need to know the number of rooms. But yes, we don't, the planning board does not consider itself with the interior design of it.
But I think the bigger question now is, with the hotel, now how many rooms does it end up with?
Twenty.
Twenty. So by default, you could only build another twenty rooms in the village based on the ordinance. And so you couldn't build more than twenty unless the planning board was going to say, "We're gonna supersede nine thirteen and allow another twenty, an extra six beyond the forty," like for it.
Which we couldn't do. I mean, we can't do that.
Can we?
Not. No, that's what land use ordinance says, forty. We can't.
Yeah, you can't exceed forty.
We can't give a waiver, we can't exceed it.
I thought there's a clause at the bottom where we can elect to, we use it twice in the past two meetings.
To do a waiver?
Do a waiver.
I mean, yeah, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, you can do a waiver with planning board approval. So what this language is basically saying, if you wanted to build more than twenty, the planning board has that right to do that.
But we can't, we can't exceed forty.
Well, that would be the waiver.
Yeah, so here's the ordinance. Ordinance has all the restricted, all the restrictions that is gonna exist, and that would get your ease of approval. But if you wanted to exceed it, you'd have to get a waiver approval. So that would be the planning board granting the waiver that, yeah, we could exceed it. Now, that would get hairy pretty quickly, but they, they could request it. The planning board can consider it.
If the planning board wants to go to court again.
Well, but to your point, David, today, there is a hotel there. Tomorrow, you know, or ten, twenty years from now, it could be converted into condos. And now we're back to forty rooms.
True, so the way, all this is basically saying, if it's gonna be larger than twenty, the planning board would need to approve it. But as it exists today, if somebody were to come before us, they wouldn't be able to propose more than twenty anyways.
Practically speaking, today, right now, no.
In the entire village itself, nine one three, forty max.
Yeah.
No matter how many come and go, forty max. And then, we're not, I guess we're not getting involved with the, if it's a one king bed or two queens.
Yeah, we do have to term that.
If it is, we're just doing the room.
Well, yeah, you look at the number of beds in a room for density too. I, I don't think we should be inside the buildings, personally. I understand the density question, but we define the density in the village, which is only like five buildings right on top when it says forty rooms max. That right there is.
You know, Joe, if you, you could do the same thing about restaurants too, about like how many tables, how many chairs. I mean, we do that, and you know, we're just staying consistent here.
Well, we determine the number of parking spaces based on the number of tables in a restaurant. We don't specify how many tables they could have.
But this doesn't get at that. What this is getting at is there's already something that says forty rooms max. So all it's doing is saying, the planning board reserves the right to approve more than twenty on one lot. The reality is, today, that would not come into effect because there is a max already. But to, to John's point, twenty years down the road, if those twenty rooms go away, and now you have forty again, somebody could come before you and say, "I wanna build twenty-six rooms," the planning board would have the ability to allow that to happen at their discretion.
Okay, and they would if you removed that last section also. They would still have that discretion.
But what is, what is proposed to be removed, the?
Yeah, everything, yeah, whatever you highlighted there, everything that down from that. I had, I proposed just leaving no more than forty rooms in the aggregate shall be permitted in the inns hotels in the nine thirteen zoning district. I, I, it just seems like it's making it very complicated to try to add these additional conditions and terms on there.
But if you take out what they're proposing, it goes on to say that no single inn or hotel or any combination on the same lot shall have more than twenty. But what if the lot could accommodate twenty-six and there were only fourteen rooms currently in the village? Then somebody should be able to, it's the same, build a twenty-six room hotel.
Or at least have the planning board review it.
Yeah, at least correct, and let the planning board at their discretion.
Okay.
Right, but without that sentence there.
They would not be allowed to do it. So they may not, not be able, they may not be able to make the feasibility of that site work without those six additional rooms, in which case nothing gets built.
No, no, if, if it's just the first sentence, no more than forty rooms in aggregate shall be permitted in inns hotels in the nine thirteen zoning district.
Correct, but all they're adding is the underlying part. So then it goes on to say that you can't have more than twenty rooms on one lot.
Right, what I'm saying is, maybe the planning board suggests that, that sentence is removed in addition.
The entire sentence. So one lot could have forty rooms.
To the first sentence.
Did this change originate at the?
So the first, but what it was initially, it was the first sentence, as Joe suggested.
That's what was there initially.
And then the hotel came about, and then there was an ordinance amendment that came up with the second and third sentence here.
I mean, the cleanest way to do that, yes, would be to strip all of it and just say that there's no more than forty rooms allowed in that district. And if there's twenty currently, that means the next guy that comes in can only build twenty.
What if those twenty go away, one?
Then one person could build forty on one lot, yes.
Well, with the planning board's approval.
Well, okay, and then the planning board, I think, would look at the size and scale of buildings that were being proposed. I mean, there's, there's still limitations on that.
So I mean, initially, you know, if we wanted to put this into consideration, that hotel initially proposed thirty-six rooms, and then they got reduced down to twenty-six naturally.
Right.
And then the whole mess with everything else.
But Joe, to your point, if you don't wanna get involved in interior stuff, somebody could come to you on the same lot and where the current hotel, they're, they're building, you know, let's say thousand square foot rooms, they're getting twenty-six, but some guy could come in and say, "Well, I wanna build little studios, I'm gonna get forty in there." Your point was, well, we shouldn't dictate how they carve up the inside of the hotel, and maybe that's okay.
Right.
Don't know.
So if you built, if they converted, say, the current hotel to forty rooms, then from a density standpoint, there would still only be forty rooms allowed in the village, and there would not be another hotel or inn that could be constructed.
That's correct.
Right, yeah. So, yeah, back to the beginning, what I had originally proposed is that we just retain the first sentence there. I just think we're complicating it, and there's gonna be a lot of interpretations of what.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
The following three sentences, that's all.
Except that the second sentence, starting with no single inn or hotel, is already part of the ordinance.
I'm sorry, which, which sentence now? Second.
The only thing that's being added is without the approval of the Rockport Planning Board.
So what Joe's saying is, we would be, in, in effect, striking that part of the ordinance that's in the whole sentence.
Well, the spirit of, the executive summary of this change said that it was an arbitrary number of a, of a twenty rooms per single inn or motel was arbitrary and limited development. So it sounds like Joe's recommendation is, if you just get rid of that whole sentence, it wipes away any kind of obfuscation of that, that twenty units.
Is that what you're proposing, just get rid of the whole thing?
Only retain the first sentence.
Oh, okay. So that, and that, that implies cutting out no single inn or hotel.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
It's just cleaning it up completely, like.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then there's the supplement is arbitrary.
And again, if we agree from a density standpoint that forty rooms in the village, which somebody had originally proposed and thought was reasonable, if we still agree that's reasonable, then I think that would work.
I'm okay with that. Anything that's gonna wanna be forty rooms, if that thing gets torn down, we're probably more up and we're probably not gonna, or we would have to review it.
Well, I mean, if somebody wanted to put up a ten-story building that was forty rooms, I think we might have an issue with the size and scale fitting into the neighborhood.
Agreed.
So I mean, there would be a reason that we would not wanna do that.
I'm, I'm good with one sentence there.
Simplicity is great.
I'm good with that.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna need to retract the original suggestion of approval that was on the table and propose a new one, I think. Because we were proposing it as was, as it was to be, without the deletions.
So I don't think we made a motion on this one.
Wasn't a motion?
No, I didn't do it this time. I read your mind, Joe. I knew we were gonna change this.
I, I move. Okay. I move to recommend that the proposed amendment to land use ordinance subsection nine one seven G nine pertaining, pertaining to the supplement on guest rooms in Rockport Village be amended as written.
As noted this evening.
As noted this evening.
Striking everything from without onward.
Second that.
What, what, just to be clear, Mark, why don't you just read the first sentence?
Sure, to, to be amended to include only the first sentence, "No more than forty rooms in the aggregate shall be permitted in inns, hotels, in the nine one three zoning district," period.
Second.
Okay, second. Any further discussion on that?
Can.
Okay, hearing no further discussion, all in favor of approving the amended ordinance. Re revision. Okay, I see seven, any against? None against, so it's a seven, zero, zero vote as amended there. Okay. Who, I don't know who's modifying that, is that Ryan?
That's me.
You got that, okay?
I got it.
That's easy.
All right. Subdivision ordinance amendment, this is a sewer one, I think.
Yep.
So this, if this were to be approved to go on, it would go on the ballot in November?
Yes.
Yep, okay. Great.
Okay, any discussion on this?
So I think.
Well, that's the election that we vote, that's when we vote.
Oh, yeah, okay. I didn't know if there was.
No, no, I just was trying to figure out the timing of, you know.
So I think the issue here is really, it's a little bit dated in that there was no sewer when this was written, I'm guessing, and it referred to the comprehensive plan and took some guidance from the comprehensive plan. Now that we actually have sewers in some areas in town, I think that necessitates the change here. And so I had asked just where the sewer ordinance was, just to make sure the sewer ordinance was reasonable in not saying that all subdivisions are required to be connected, but only those subdivisions where the sewer goes by, which is great. So it does indeed say that. One other thing, Ryan, I did notice when I did the search, there's thirty-seven references to the comprehensive plan in the subdivision ordinance. And from a, from a comprehensive plan committee standpoint, I'm not sure we even realized all those things existed, and we just need to be careful how we treat some of those things. I didn't realize there are so many references in there. Okay, so hearing no further discussion on this one and accepting it as proposed. Anyone wanna move to accept this as it is? Or approve it, recommend it, whatever the word is, recommend it as stated?
I, I move, we recommend the proposed amendments to subdivision ordinances as presented.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Okay, no further discussion heard, all in favor. Are four, and that's seven. Anyone against? Seeing none against, it's seven, zero, zero. Okay. Just as a check again, any comments from online?
Haven't seen any, we lost whoever was there.
Is that you?
No, no, we actually got up to three.
Okay, great. Okay, I think that's it, isn't it?
For the ordinances, yes.
Yes, for the ordinances, okay. Now we'll approve minutes from five twenty-six, which I don't think we had the right people here last time to approve it. Present.
So what is all this cleanup in the parking traffic ordinance thing?
We'll get to it.
Yeah, we'll get to it.
I'll get to it in just a second.
Okay, so at this meeting, Joe, John, Victoria, David, Mark, and Tom are eligible to vote on approving these minutes.
Where are they?
They're in the five twenty-six folder.
Five twenty-six folder.
Yeah, right there, yep.
You wanna take a minute to go through those?
I move we through these minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Okay, hearing no discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes. So we've got six, zero, zero. Jeff's not able to vote. Okay, approved. Next other business.
Do we need to review planning board bylaws? There was from, it was July meeting, so. Had that initially.
Seven twenty-eight?
Seven twenty-eight, maybe it was the day.
They were in reference four, if there's nothing else.
I mean, yeah, they're definitely in there.
I found them under admin.
No, they're under admin, you're right.
Okay, Tom, what are your concerns that you reserved from before?
Do we even have folks here to vote for?
Yeah.
Something just came up, may I excuse myself?
Sure.
That, what do I need to do to do that?
So you're gonna what?
To accuse myself.
Okay. Uh, recuse yourself from the meeting, the rest of the meeting?
Yeah. Is that doable?
Are, are you gonna leave the meeting, or, or, okay?
Yeah, if somebody came up in the round.
I think that's fine. I think that's fine. I think we still have a quorum, and I think we can do that.
Yeah, you had a quorum to do it, yeah. Um, trying to think, if you need to do a motion or?
No, I think the minutes just need to reflect.
Reflect any left.
Six forty-two.
So, right, the minutes reflect that, um, Mark Haley, uh, is leaving the meeting and is no longer voting as of six thirty-two this evening. Okay, so back to the, um, the bylaws. Tom, you had some comments that you reserved from before, I know.
Yeah, in section four, paragraph D, it says the chair shall call all meetings of the planning board or designate an appropriate appointed official to carry out this responsibility. Section five, paragraph C, says the date, time, place, and agenda for meetings shall be established by the planning and development director in coordination with the board chair. So, uh, in the first instance, I think it means to not say call, but maybe preside? Does, there's another paragraph that says preside.
Well, presiding and calling are kind of the same thing.
I know, but it just cleans up, I think, what Tom is highlighting. We need to add something to cover, I think, the scheduling date and all that, but I think one is intended to say who runs the meeting. No, it doesn't. E, E says the chair shall preside. Oh, okay, all right, yep. Now, call me, calling a meeting means scheduling it. So I just, I just think there's.
So let's start, you're good with D, right? You think that's the way it should be? Is it, is it the further on down statement that you have issues with?
Well, I would say which way do you want it? I, I think it probably should be coordinated between the planning director and the chair.
Okay, so if I can propose, maybe let's leave these the way they are, and let's go down to the paragraph that was in conflict in five. So what, I could tell you what happens in reality is that Orion, uh, puts together a draft agenda, sends it to myself and the assistant chair, uh, for concurrence, uh, on date, time, what's on the agenda, and then that agenda is published. So that's what happens in reality. So the chair and vice chair have discretion over when the meeting is to be scheduled and what's included on the agenda. Maybe it doesn't exactly say that there.
Yeah, instead of established.
Shall be proposed by the planning director?
That would be a good word.
Yeah, proposed, um, and, I don't know, in coordination, maybe, and reviewed by the board chair and vice chair, something like that. Instead of, uh, I don't know, you can't propose in coordination, really. Make that proposed, um, by the planning director and reviewed with the board chair.
Well, do you even need the planning director in there? Because, you know, in, to your point, Joe, in practice, you know, Orion works for the planning board and, you know, either you can do it directly, schedule it and all that, or you can delegate that, or, you know, effectively direct Orion to do that for you. Does, does it really even need to be in here, I guess?
One other question, does it even really matter what we put in the document? At the end of the day, what's going to happen is what's going to happen.
Well, it does matter, because.
The bylaws, yeah, because if, if, if we're ever sued, then this is.
Should be close to reality.
They're all official documents.
There's people splitting hairs on this.
So.
Six forty-five already, we've been here an hour and fifteen minutes and. Splitting hairs over words, I don't know. We didn't even have any business before us tonight.
So, and D, though, did it say the chair shall call a meeting of the planning board or designate an appropriate appointed official to carry out this responsibility? So, I mean, we currently do that, you currently.
Yep, that's fine.
Do that, so that.
That's not an issue.
That covers that, um, and I think that would also bleed into this C, so how it's currently written.
Or the, the planning director, um.
I, I see your point, John, on that.
I mean, we, you know, the. It could be in a situation, I'm not suggesting it, but it could be a situation where we're short on, you know, the, the seats vacated and we haven't got, we, you know, maybe there isn't an Orion in that spot. I'm not suggesting it, I'm just saying. There's always going to be a chair.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so operationally and realistically, Orion gets all the applications. They come into his office before time. I don't know what goes on the agenda until he tells me what applications he got and proposes an agenda, then I could say, yeah, that looks, that looks reasonable.
Yeah, but that.
See, I, if they came into me, then I could, I could do it, but they don't.
Well, no.
And I'm not proposing they come into me.
It is your responsibility, Joe, as chair.
It is.
It, it's not Orion's responsibility.
To, to run and establish the meeting and the agenda, I agree. And so if we, if we put proposed by the planning director in here.
And then and coordinated with the chair.
Or and approved by the chair.
In coordination with it.
In coordination with the chair.
They're already there.
That's fine. Are those words, as they are written there, okay, with the highlight, highlighted changes?
Why don't we go with maybe established?
Or in coordination with, so.
Are you serious?
Uh, only half, only half serious, but I thought it was pretty funny, actually.
But isn't it in coordination with? Because then that's what you're in theory doing.
Right, we are. That's the way it works today.
Why don't we say the date, time, and meetings shall be set by the chair in coordination with the planning and development director?
That's fine.
Cool.
That's fine. I love it.
Well, that's some praise coming from high places there.
I know. Mr. Wordsmith over there.
What were the words again?
Yeah, that goes away. Can I keep going?
I, uh, spell chair.
The in coordination goes before board chair, I think.
Shall be set by the planning.
Shall some of the planning.
In coordination with.
Yes.
Orion.
Yes.
Let's just put Orion's name in here, so we'll never have to change his document. He'd never, never change jobs.
Yeah, the thing is, Orion doesn't want to be in that, does he? I mean, he doesn't want to be the person making our decisions. That's what I'm trying to get to, is not.
Yep.
Not put him in, into that, give him the.
You just cede all control to Orion.
Oh, man.
We don't have to do these meetings anymore?
Yeah, there you go, okay, I'll go with that.
Okay, are those words acceptable to everyone, as noted there?
Yep. And what were the words again? Set by the chair in coordination with the development director? Period, or comma, then made of, available, blah, blah, blah.
And made, I don't know what it is.
In reality, the last time we changed the time of the meeting, the entire board voted on it. So actually, the entire board set the time for Thursday of the month. All right, any other changes besides that suggested? David, nothing. John?
I'm good.
Victoria?
That's it.
Tom?
Nothing more.
Jeff, I think we, uh, I'm not recommending this time, huh?
We, I think we have to vote on the bylaws. We have to actually.
I, I move that we approve the bylaws as amended.
Okay, second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Tom. Um, any further discussion on bylaws? Hearing none, all in favor of sending forth the amendment, bylaws as amended, okay, and that's six zero zero. Okay, and so what actually happens with these is these go to the select board. Select board looks at our changes recommended and approves them. And not until they approve them do we operate that way. Okay, um, item five, other business consideration of possible changes to ordinance concerning parking in the village at August meeting. And so, um, it's been suggested to me that the planning board, um, that the planning, the word planning in our title, we do have the ability to do some planning and based on our knowledge, recommend changes to ordinances, uh, that exist in the village, in the town. And so, um, it was suggested that the planning board maybe take a little bit more active role in looking at some of the ordinances that affect the parking in the village and determine if, based on our experience, there are things that, uh, changes that we think should be recommended. And so I don't think that anyone here, I'm, uh, is prepared tonight to make any significant changes since we just introduced this topic, but, um, I did ask Orion to, uh, at least prepare some kind of a summary of what his concerns are about the current parking ordinance. Uh, the parking ordinance has been posted on the planning board webpage, and I would ask you to take a read through it for our next meeting so that we can enter into some purposeful discussion about how it might be modified.
Yeah, it's not just parking, it's traffic too.
So one, I just have one question on this. So there are some highlighted things in this exhibit, Schedule A, is that, are those changes, whose recommendations are those?
Those, uh, they're highlighted on a PDF in there, then those are more than likely mine.
Okay.
I kind of thought that. I thought those were areas of concern.
Yeah, 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 I just.
That was from your letter, was that like what you were, okay, playing on that letter?
So, um, in addition to this, you know, um, the, the town is already having, um, an attorney look at drafting a portion of this for some other areas and the other parts of town that need to be, um, addressed, so there's.
So should we be.
Parking and traffic flow, but.
Waiting to see that before we spend time on this?
Yeah, well, 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 for the most part, most of this isn't going to be addressed. I think what they're drafting is something in addition to, because it's something that falls outside of what this parking ordinance can do, or this ordinance in particular. So that's coming, so that'll be into consideration. I'm not sure, I'm not sure. It won't be on November ballot, that's for sure.
Do you think that's going to augment, uh, augment this, or is it worthwhile looking at this as it stands now?
Yeah, it will not.
It's going to be in addition to, I think.
It'll be more than likely in addition to.
Yeah, I think if I'm correct, this was like written back in nineteen fifty-five or something.
Seventy-nine, it was amended in ninety-seven.
Yep.
Okay.
And so, you know, the main concern is that it references things that I don't know where they're at.
I mean, it's close. And I know in some cases, there are things in here that aren't even enforced today, that it states.
And the police chief, he and I have had a conversation about it, he agrees it needs an overhaul, so.
Wouldn't it make more sense to start from scratch than trying to amend an obsolete document?
It's possible. Um, I can talk to the police chief again, have a re-review and a relook at it, which he knows.
That might make, make it be a lot easier.
Can we have maybe Randy participate in the meeting?
Possibly, I'll ask him.
If he would be willing, that might be a good discussion.
Yeah, it might be easier to do a workshop on this one at some point in time.
Okay, that'd be fine, too.
I just think to the extent we start over with what we think it should be today, maybe easier than trying to clean up language.
If we, if we think there's a good model, it might be good to look at a starting point, if somewhere else, or somewhere else has a good model.
Yeah, start from scratch, looking at a model. Um, I'm not sure what would be the best option with this one, but.
Well, why don't, why don't we consider that over this next month here and come back with ideas and thoughts about that?
Or maybe if you could provide examples from other towns of their traffic ordinances as a.
Yeah, I can do that.
Three or four examples of, here's how other towns have written it.
Well, yeah, and then the question I had, Orion, is these are, do most ordinance, ordinances get into this much detail to where they actually are talking about specific streets and sections, like from?
These actually name businesses, from the ice building to the something, something.
Well, there's that, but then there's like from this intersection to that intersection.
Not necessarily. Sometimes they would reference like a map, like a map would, you know, it would have a flow change.
Should be a lot easier than trying to describe it writing.
Well, the, the thing is, our roads, our, you know, our streets vary so much, you know, they might be on a hill, they might be windy, they might be narrow, can't get, you know, that's where I'm having issues myself.
I almost think it would be better to look at more of the larger cities ordinances or, than, than the towns that are written by committees that, you know, a city's probably going to streamline it better than a committee trying to write a parking ordinance in a town, so I think.
If, if a city could be scaled.
Yeah, I'm just talking like, like Rockland or, or Belfast, right, a city government where the town planning office would write those things instead of a committee.
We got to look up and down the midcoast and see what there is, yeah, agree.
We just find that anything that's done at the committee level is extremely inefficient, so.
The, let me say, and I don't know if this is, it may not be included in the parking ordinance, but the other thing is, is that the marking around town is just terribly inconsistent. You, and you and I have had this discussion. I mean, I don't know, I live here and I don't know where I can park legally.
Anywhere.
Well, that's what he told me. He did tell me that. If it's not marked, it's fine, you can park there as long as you want.
So I don't think anything's being enforced either, right?
Not in the two hours.
Yep.
Well, yeah, it's not just the name. Well, we, we're going to have a workshop on this.
So if anyone finds something that they think looks like a good model from a different town of, uh, that, that might work as a starting point, please post it on the SharePoint and, um, we can look at it. And then let's next month come back prepared to maybe have a little bit more in-depth discussion of this. Anything you wanted to share beyond what you did about the current ordinance, right, Ryan?
About the current ordinance?
The current parking ordinance, yeah.
Oh, no, I mean, what, what you've seen, what I've highlighted, those are my immediate concerns in the, the section A or the rider A. I don't know where most of those locations are, so it's kind of hard for me to say this is where two-hour parking is. So it's also kind of hard to enforce if that's our ordinance, because anybody can say that's, you can't give me a ticket, where's the ice house? So, um, it would, it would, it would, hav- having a stronger ordinance would make not only my job easier, but the planning board jobs easier on finding parking for additional businesses and making the downtown and other parts of the community more organized.
So where was the one that you marked up, Orion, because I'm missing it here?
It's in there, but it's the, only the last page, so.
Yeah.
There's a separate folder that says parking ordinance.
The parking traffic ordinance, are you in the parking ordinance folder of eight twenty-five, twenty-two?
Yep, but I'm, oh, there it is, yep, yep, got it. Okay, it is actually the one I was looking at, it's just all the way to the last page.
Yep.
Okay. How come you can't read the comments?
It's, it's in Adobe, um, and Adobe and Microsoft don't have a fin, uh, a monetary agreement yet, that's why.
Okay, so, um, for next month. Um, any other new business? No, okay, um, I think we're, what, anything else?
There, that's it, nope.
Okay.
I move that we adjourn.
Okay, second? Seconded by David, all in favor? Okay, six zero zero, thank you. So the meeting is officially adjourned at seven PM.
Sweet.